Kerrville City Council Meeting is in session. At this time, I'm going to ask Councilmember Delane Seigerman if she would lead us in the prayer and the pledge. If you'll please stand.
If you'll pray with me, please. To Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, this building, this opportunity to come together. Now that the signs are gone, the election's over, we can go back to work. Keep us all safe and well and healthy. Thank all the frontline workers who worked so hard to keep us that way. Help this meeting to go well this evening and that we may continue to be productive and work as a good team. In your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
As Stuart makes his way to the podium to talk to us about areas, you know, community interests, remember the importance of Veterans Day, and there are many observances tomorrow around the city, and I hope you participate in those.
Thank you, Mayor. And as you just said, we want to remind everybody that tomorrow is Veterans Day. Certainly want to take into account all the service people who live here in Kerrville and say hello to them when we get a chance. Also a reminder that the city offices will be closed tomorrow, but will be open again Thursday. I also want to remind everybody that we will not have a city council meeting the week of Thanksgiving and that the city offices will be closed November 26th and 27th. Just want to tell everybody, remember that. It was a great day for Kerrville today. We had a ribbon cutting for the new HEB store, which opens at 6:00 a.m. in the morning. My wife said, "Well, we've got to go." And I was thinking, "There's no way we're going to get in there at 6:00 a.m. in the morning. It's going to be a pretty big crowd." I know a lot of y'all got to see it today, and it was truly spectacular. The ribbon cutting came with a jaw-dropping donation announcement by HEB. Photo of it up here, and then I will let the city manager comment on.
Yeah, so we've been working really hard for months, primarily Kim Ismer and the prior librarian, and now our new librarian Danielle, on a grant application to HEB. We asked for a million, and this was back before COVID. And they told us they were going to pause, but they did invite us back to apply again in September, and so we did so. And Kim and Danielle did some great work in answering a lot of questions about how the money would be used, submitted a lot of data on not just the capital funding for the facility, but also long-term operation and maintenance. And so we were totally surprised when they announced today that we were, in fact, going to be getting the funding, half of it from the foundation and half of it from the company. And so we're just delighted, and I just want to compliment Kim and Danielle for their great work on securing that grant. And so we're now looking at moving forward with that project. This was kind of the linchpin to make that work, and so we're going to be revisiting on that schedule and how we can implement it. So, as Stuart said, a big day for Kerrville.
All right. Expressions of gratitude to HEB and the Butt family and the history of that company I would like to also recognize our new council member, Brenda Hughes, is with us tonight, and will be sworn in next week and then join us for the next council meeting. Now, for the Kerrville Kindness Award, I would like for folks representing the Doyle In this kindness award, we are recognizing the significant work and strategic work of the Doyle Community Center. As you know, that was the black school until the mid-'60s. And then Kerrville Independent School District used it as a kindergarten, and it was used for different purposes. And then in 2004, with a gift from the Calhoun Foundation, it was purchased from the KISD to be used in that community for education, community, and hope. And in fact, I'm going to... Kay, would you just raise your hand? This is Kay Talley-Foo. She is the chairman of the board of the Doyle Community Center. Her mother was principal of the Doyle kindergarten when it was there. But let me say something else about Hope for Health. A significant grant was awarded two years ago to essentially help find ways to increase the access of low-income persons to better health care. And so the focus of Hope for Health is health for folks in that area, transportation, and good food. And it is having quite an effect already. But so there's... Hope for Health is housed at the Doyle Center. Let me read the proclamation. "City of Kerrville recognizes the Doyle Community Center with the November 10, 2020 Kerrville Kindness Award. Utilizing grants from the City of Kerrville, the Build Health Challenge, and others to renovate its facilities, the historic Doyle Community Center has provided crucial support to its surrounding community in 2020. With the negative effects of COVID-19 severely impacting the community, the center has stepped up efforts to meet the needs of its constituents, whether it be through food distribution to local children and adults in partnership with area restaurants and nonprofit organizations, medical care through its Hope for Health clinic in partnership with Peterson Health, summer craft programs for neighborhood youth, and other community organized events." And this is signed by the members of the city council. I want to ask this. Did any of you attend... I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Did any of you attend the Doyle School when it was still a segregated school? All right, all right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Kay, I'm going to give this to you. And you are... It is real appreciation in the part of the city for what you're doing. I think it's great. Thank you. Thank you. You what? Oh, we get a photo. Okay, sorry. All right, thank you. One more, one more. Thank you, guys.
Good night, guys. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Seigerman. Thank you.
Now, do we have persons here tonight representing home care and hospice work? Would you come up? Let me read this proclamation. "City of Kerrville proclamation. While many Texans suffering from illness or injuries receive quality care from dedicated healthcare professionals in hospitals or other facilities, some Texans need or prefer a more comfortable, intimate setting. And whereas home care and hospice organizations meet this need by providing individualized and professional medical care and assistance to the elderly, disabled, and chronically ill, the simple yet powerful comfort of a home setting is a key feature of these services that offer excellent care to help patients achieve a better quality of life. And whereas during the month of November, an awareness campaign is conducted to highlight home care and hospice as alternatives to hospitalization and other forms of institutional health care, home care and hospice professionals help their patients live every day to the fullest, and it is important for their commitment and skill to be recognized and commended. And whereas we encourage all Texans to learn more about home care and hospice options and the valuable contributions of all Texas healthcare providers. Now therefore, I, Bill Blackburn, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim November 2020 as Home Care and Hospice Month in Kerrville, Texas, and encourage the support and participation of all citizens in learning more about the home care and hospice philosophy of care for the elderly, disabled, and the terminally ill." Congratulations for all the work that you do. All right, okay. I think we're going to get a photo, but let me ask you this. How many in here have had a family member assisted by home care or hospice? Look at this. Wow. See? That's good. Good to know. All right, okay. Photo. All right, we're going to move up one other recognition tonight, and that is a proclamation for Delane Seigerman. And Delane, I'm going to ask you to come up here.
I knew you would do it.
All right. Right here. "The City of Kerrville Resolution of Commendation. Whereas Delane Seigerman has served as councilmember place four for the City of Kerrville since May 2018 and on the steering committee for Kerrville 2050, and has shown sincere concern for the welfare of the citizens of Kerrville. And whereas we, as members of the city council, wish to express our appreciation to Delane Seigerman for her many contributions during her tenure of office from May 2018 through November 2020. And whereas Delane Seigerman during her term on city council, served as mayor pro temp in 2018. Among her many contributions were efforts to identify and address the needs of the homeless population in the city, coordination and provision of assistance for food, shelter, and services for citizens during the COVID pandemic 2020, volunteer support for the Kerrville farmers market, and advocacy for downtown businesses. Now therefore, being resolved by the city council of the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere gratitude for the invaluable services rendered by Delane Seigerman and for serving honestly, fairly, and effectively, and always keeping the best interests of the community and the forefront at all times." I'm going to show you the formal award and put it over here at your place. But I did not know Delane until we started campaigning together in 2018. But I count her as a dear friend who has made amazing contributions to this council and to this city. Now, let me present something to you. Big old heavy.
Well, thank you, Bill. I mean, I can count her as a dear friend. She's just wanting to see any bonuses come out of her stuff.
All right. You guys have something to say?
I do.
She's got it. Never mind. Oh, she's got one. Never mind.
Is it on? Okay. So, I've had to do some really tough things on city council, but I would have to say tonight is at the top. So I'm going to start with some light trivia, some campaign trivia, if you will, with some personal observations that I have. First of all, I've run unopposed and I've run opposed, and unopposed is a lot more fun. Okay? My replacement is a female, which keeps the 3-2 female-male ratio intact. Not that I have anything against men, but I'm really proud of women who will stand up and give of their time. I can now have lunch with any two of you without the fear of a quorum, which I probably will do many more times. I know you all probably have a 2020 blacklist. I now have one, too. But I know Brenda's going to do a good job, and I'm proud that she's able to do so. So, when I took this job... Let me get my glasses. I had never been to councilmember school, so I relied on the city to help me a great deal just transitioning to just a citizen, to what's important for the city. And if the city hadn't been so gracious, so professional, so courteous and patient, I'm not sure I could have done the same good job. So I'm thanking you very much for all that you did to get me to do a good job for the city. And I know they'll do the same for Brenda. So I also have to say a few things about my councilmembers. Many people have asked me, "What makes your council team so special?" And I would have to say that it's one thing, but a lot of things. The one thing we have in common is we want what's best for Kerrville. But there's a lot of other good things this council has that's made that happen. I used to play a lot of adult softball, and we were actually pretty good. One year, we went to Nationals in Modesto, California, before I actually appreciated wine. And that team was special. But, you know, what made it special? Every position played its position well. And I kind of think our council is very much like that. We're different. We have different positions, but we come together for the common cause, and our goal is what's best for Kerrville and to win the game. So thank you, councilmember. I've left you personal notes because there's just no way I could say all I have to say and not keep to our time. The other... The people out here, I want to thank. Every council meeting that we had, I would get a text or a note afterwards or an email saying, "Thank you for serving. Thank you for being there tonight. You made the right decision," or "Behind you," or "Call us if we can help." So I can't thank you all enough for doing that for 30 months. So those are my treasures, my friends. My treasurer, who's not here tonight, Jennifer Phelps, really did a great job keeping my money intact early on, as well as just being a good support for me. So wherever... If you're listening, Jennifer, thank you very much. Karen Johnson is my social media wizard. Would you stand up, Karen? A lot of people want to know who is behind all those wonderful constant contacts. So... Thank you very much. There's one person I have to thank that... I don't even know if I can have the words to do it, but my husband, Mike, actually said okay when I said I wanted to run again. I gave him a week, and if he said no, I wasn't going to do it. Because really and truly, if your spouse is not behind you when you're doing this, it's very tough. So he said, "Sure, let's do this again." And you have to remember, when you're going through tough times on a council meeting, your spouse is going through it, too. He sees you worried. He sees you stressed. And he did a lot. So he was at the polls every morning, every evening. He put up a bazillion signs only to have to take them down and then put them back up. So, "Where are you, Mike?" Oh, okay. Thank you. I love you, and I probably will never do this again. Because running, the word running, will not be in my vocabulary unless it's from a burning building or on the River Trail, okay? Let's see. So this slight change to council, it won't undo the good things that we have accomplished. And I'm hopeful that Brenda will want to listen and learn and work with each of you and keep Kerrville on track. I'm sure she will. And I'm counting on you all to do good work. Because if you don't, I'll be there on Tuesday nights. And if I can't make it, I'll send Mike. So I just want to quote a quote from Pablo Picasso, who said, "The meaning of life is to find your gift, but the purpose of life is to give the gift away." So this is not goodbye, but just farewell for now. I have more to give, and you'll be seeing me. Thank you for coming, and thank you for all your support. We're not done with you yet. Is this on?
Yeah, it is.
Is... Okay. All right. Come over here. We've got somebody... Karen, come on over to the mic, if you will. I have for you a bottle fresh from... This is one, fresh from HEB. But we've got to get it on here.
How did you know? You must know me, Judy.
A little birdie.
Is it rosé bubbles?
There we go. And for me, you have been a yellow rose of Kerrville. So here's a couple of yellow roses. And we know you're going to continue to be a yellow rose for Kerrville, so thank you.
Yeah.
Well, Karen has something to say, too.
Delane, I hope I can get through this, too. Kerrville owes you a great debt of gratitude for all you've done for our city during our 30 months of public service. Those of us who really know you realize that this is not the end of your giving to our community, it's just the beginning. We know how much the River Trail means, not only to us, but to you. You've worked tirelessly to get that trail extension project completed. Your friends, colleagues, and supporters would like to commemorate your leadership and passion for our city by placing a bench on the River Trail at a place of your choosing with a plaque honoring you and your work as city councilwoman. We actually raised so much money that we're putting two benches down. Thank you, Delane, for your faithful commitment to our community. You truly have made a difference for all of us, and we're sincerely grateful.
Thank you for all you do for me and for the city and for our neighbors and our streets and our parks and just being there for me, too. So thank you again. And if you want to stay, there's a lot of good stuff coming.
All right, we come now to our Visitor Citizens Forum. Any city with... Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the Speaker Request Form and give it to the city secretary. The Speaker Request Form must be submitted to the city secretary before the item is called or read into record. City council may not discuss or take any action on any item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to four minutes. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. We have three. Mario Garcia.
Mayor, city council, thank you for the opportunity. I couldn't help but during the election process, we had these yellow signs everywhere that was listing everybody's name on theirs, particularly city council and the mayor. I kind of started thinking, as I was driving around, how I think it would have been a little bit more appropriate if we were to probably put employees' names on there, those who probably spent more time on those jobs. Plus, the idea that the divider signs that are up already lets us know it's being worked on. I think it's inappropriate to put your names on something that you're already doing and it's part of your job to do, but it kind of seems to me that it's boastful. I find it also kind of interesting it happens during the election period, so... So I also thought maybe if we were to put people who had injured during that work, that they're the effort, that maybe their names would have been more appropriate to put on there. I would love to know the idea of that, whose idea that was to put that in, primarily because I just think it's so much inappropriate. I believe the amount of money that's being spent could have been gone somewhere else. So I'll make this short. So I'd love to have been... I mean, was it the city manager's position? Was it your guys? Who didn't stand up and say, "No, no, no. That's no. We don't need to do that." I think it's very boastful. It's cluttering of the streets. It's tacky, and I think it conveys... I think it's inappropriate, and I believe it's a waste of taxpayer money. So I think that should be taken into consideration, that when you spend that money, because right now it's obsolete, so those signs now need to go to trash or a dumpster or something. So that's my point. Thank you.
George Eichner.
Thank you, George Eichner, 604 Cardinal Drive. I'm here with good news. I'm in the capacity as a president of the board of the Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation. And since you all donated money to buy an ornament for Sidney Baker, I figured I owed you an explanation that this was not a scam, that in fact, the ornaments are here. They were delivered a week ago, Monday. And on your diocer, you should have a picture of the zigzag ornament. It's a gold zigzag ornament. It's seven feet tall, weighs 45 pounds, has 55 lights on it. And K-Pub is graciously putting them up for us. They will extend all the way from I-10 to Main Street, and then we had four ornaments left over, and so there will actually be a couple on Highway 27 close to the courthouse. Just for a bit of history, the Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation was formed in 2000 as a 501(c)(3) organization, and it actually dated back to about 1995. For those of you who are old enough to remember, we had a big fire in the city warehouse in about 1992 or '93, burned up all the Christmas decorations. And so it's been at least 26 years since we've had any decorations on any street in Kerrville. And so the Christmas Lighting Corporation was repurposed in February. Initially, it was formed to decorate the courthouse. And over time, it lost its mission and was going to be disbanded, and so we repurposed it in February to be a fundraising arm for issues like ornaments on Sidney Baker. Next year, we hope to have a major fundraising initiative to install an electrical grid on Tranquility Island. But anyhow...
Thank you, George Eichner, 604 Cardinal Drive. I'm here with good news. I'm in the capacity as a president of the Board of the Curville Christmas Lighting Corporation. And since you all donated money to buy an ornament for Sidney Baker, I figured I owed you an explanation that this was not a scam, that in fact, the ornaments are here, they were delivered a week ago Monday. And on your diocer, you should have a picture of the zigzag ornament. It's a gold zigzag ornament, it's seven feet tall, weighs 45 pounds, has 55 lights on it, and K-Pub is graciously putting them up for us. They will extend all the way from I-10 to Main Street, and then we had four ornaments left over, and so there will actually be a couple on Highway 27 close to the courthouse. Just for a bit of history, the Curville Christmas Lighting Corporation was formed in 2000 as a 501(c)(3) organization, and it actually dated back to about 1995. For those of you who are old enough to remember, we had a big fire in the city warehouse in about 1992 or '93, burned up all the Christmas decorations, and so it's been at least 26 years since we've had any decorations on any street in Curville. And so, the Christmas Lighting Corporation was repurposed in February. Initially, it was formed to decorate the courthouse, and over time, it lost its mission and was going to be disbanded, and so we repurposed it in February to be a fundraising arm for issues like ornaments on Sidney Baker. Next year, we hope to have a major fundraising initiative to install an electrical grid on Tranquility Island. But anyhow, it's, our initial goal was $20,000 and to buy 25 ornaments, and we actually raised $40,000 and purchased 44 ornaments. And it's, the neat thing about this whole thing was that I didn't have to twist any arms. Everybody stepped up, I didn't have to convince anybody to donate to this. And so, just, it's a wonderful thing, looking forward to it. They will be up by the 21st of November. On the backside of your picture of the ornament is a draft of initiative that we are undertaking to replace the holiday parade, which has been canceled, and the courthouse lighting ceremony, which has been canceled because of COVID. We're going to have a virtual lighting ceremony. It's going to be similar to Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. We've got Charlie McElvein and Allison Boucher are going to be on the top floor of the city parking garage, kind of doing a play-by-play, and then down the street, we've got Rose Bradshaw and Sergio Lopez. And we're going to highlight some of the businesses. It'll be a flyover with Aaron Yates and his drone. And it ought to be a spectacular thing. Thank the city for being a co-sponsor of this and allowing us to use the Channel 2 livestream. And so, it's going to be neat. This is our first annual, and we're hoping that it's going to be something that will carry over in the future years. So, thanks for your time, and thank you again for your support, sure appreciate it.
Bruce Stricki.
Wow, what a great place we live. And I'm here to talk about another element in our community that is so important, and we've seen some of it tonight. We had up on stage the Doyle Community and their work with Peterson Health in the health program that we have going on there in the community, and we saw the hospice and the home care folks here this evening as well. And just what a super place this is for us to live, as we're seeing in so many things. And I really wanted to bring some attention to Peterson Health. In the last few weeks, I've been reminded that in March, none of us thought we'd be here wearing masks, sitting in this large space with social distancing. We thought we'd be through this situation that we're going through in the country right now, and that we wouldn't, we'd have it all figured out, and we're, this is America and all. But Peterson Health has been there this entire time, so far more than six months, and I just wanted to remind us all of not only the folks who come out to us in the community, into our homes and/or provide hospice care, and the risks that they're taking, but those staff members that are in the hospital. And every day, they're not only wearing a mask, but they're wearing full PPE, and they're going in and out and being there available to us. And I'd just like to encourage everybody here to reach out to somebody at Peterson Health that you know and tell them you've got their back. Because seven months in, and they're tired. And we, as a community, need to just remind them how much we appreciate them and love that they're here, and remember how lucky we are to have an independent local hospital taking care of us all. It's just, we, this is a wonderful, wonderful place. There's always great things to find about Curville here. I just wanted to remind us all, thank you.
That's the end of the speakers?
That's all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We now come to the consent agenda. These items will be voted on together unless a council member or citizen asks to pull one.
Mayor, can I, I want to make a clarification on something that I needed to be reminded on on one of the items?
Could you move your mic, go over there?
I would like to just make a clarification on one of the items before we approve the consent agenda, is that okay? Or do you want to approve the others first?
Does it need to be pulled?
No, not unless, if you...
All right, then let's go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to put it out there because I had forgotten, and it was just a brief conversation I had with the city manager yesterday when we were talking about approving the replacement vehicles and things like this. And I just wanted to clarify for myself yesterday, because in a lot of budget cycles, you approve a budget, and then if you have an expenditure that's within that budget, you don't have to approve it again. And so, sometimes when I see these on there, it's a little bit confusing. But Mark, you clarified that, that yes, this is within our budget, and there are some limits, some governmental limits that are established. Over $50,000, we have to go through this process. And it always just kind of strikes me when I see it on there, and I always ask myself the question, is this something we've already approved? And if it is, why is it on here? And so, I'm just putting it out there for my own clarification in case that anyone else had that question. So, now I can go forward and not think that every single time.
Okay.
That's it, that's my only clarification.
I think it's stating again, it's replacement. They're not brand new, they're replacing others that are, it's a replacement, not actually new vehicles. Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
All right. Do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agendas 4A, 4B, and 4C.
All right. Second. Okay, we've got a motion second. All in favor of this approval of the consent agenda? Okay. At 6:37, we enter into a public hearing, and if you would read in 5A.
Resolution number 25-2020, a resolution for a conditional use permit for accessory dwelling unit in short-term rental on 3112 Riverside Drive.
All right. Discussion or questions on this one? Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit and a short-term rental on 3112 Riverside Drive. It's currently zoned R1, as is the rest of Riverside Drive. Behind us is zone PD, excuse me, is zone C3, which was a PD rezoned earlier this year. Here's the site plan. They are asking to build a new home and the additional dwelling units, so there will be two homes on this lot. Both of those homes will be used as short-term rental units. It is consistent with the zoning code. They will be required to add parking according to the bedroom count as per code, and Planning and Zoning Commission approved this unanimously, and staff's recommending your approval. If you please answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Drew, is there, there is always a notice that goes out to neighbors?
That is correct.
Correct? And so, anyone that's in the neighborhood that might live close to something like this has the opportunity to come and speak, talk, object, or tell us their feelings and thoughts on that?
That is correct. We send notice to any property owner within 200 feet. For this one, we sent nine letters to adjacent property owners.
In response?
They had no response. Excuse me. We did have one response in writing to the Planning Commission, but they were opposed to storage units. And these are not storage units, so.
Okay. And here's a question. Is it on both sides of Riverside Drive?
They do own both sides of Riverside Drive, so these properties will have immediate access to the river.
This is the one, okay, this is on the river side, then? Well, these properties?
Well, the buildings will be on the bank side, but they do have access below on the actual riverbank.
Okay. All right. I've seen that they've already done some things, you know, across the street there, but anyway, not any buildings. All right, what's your pleasure on this one?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 25-2020.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. It is a public hearing.
Yeah.
Ms. Francina, are there any callers on Zoom?
Yeah, okay. Do we have any speakers on this? All right.
There are no callers on Zoom.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
We have no callers.
Okay, okay. All right. Got a motion, second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
See if anybody here wants to speak.
Did anyone from the audience want to speak on this item?
Okay. All right, we've got a motion, second. All in favor of this motion, raise the right hand.
I didn't get the motion in second, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Who made the motion?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 25-2020. Thank you.
And I second.
Thank you.
Okay, 5B, Ms. McElahan.
Resolution Number 26-2020, a resolution for a conditional use permit for short-term rental on 201 Starkey Street.
We need to go back and take that vote. Last motion.
We didn't vote on that motion.
Yeah, we did.
But we did it before the motion was made again, so we...
All right, okay. Make the motion, and then here's a second, then we'll vote. Kim?
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 25-2020.
And I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, raise the right hand. We've got to vote. Okay. Okay. 5B, if you'll read that in for us, Kim.
Resolution Number 26-2020, a resolution for a conditional use permit for short-term rental on 201 Starkey Street.
All right. Comments, questions, or Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a conditional use permit for a short-term rental unit 201 Starkey. Property is zoned R1A, as is the rest of the neighborhood. This is just down the street from Lowry Park, Trailhead, and of course, near downtown. It is an existing home. Here's a site plan indicating where they're providing their parking on the existing driveway. Planning and Zoning Commission approved this unanimously with the conditions attached to the resolution. We had, excuse me, 23 letters mailed out to adjacent property owners and had no responses. If you please answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
The property looks good. I mean, it looks like it's ready. Okay, do we have any speakers? Anyone speak to this?
We have no callers.
Okay, all right.
Drew, on the parking there, it's tight.
It is. I believe they were looking to see if they could save the tree, then maybe removing some landscaping to get those parking spaces in.
And they will be, they'll be off the street?
Yes.
It definitely will be?
That's correct.
Okay.
You know, this is another example where the River Trail is a factor because you're half a block from the River Trail. Okay. All right. We have a motion on 26-2020.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 26-2020.
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a motion, a second? Any other discussion? All in favor, raise the right hand. All right, and it passes unanimously. All right. At 6:43, we're out of that public hearing, and we go into another one at 6:43. Would you read that 6A in for us?
Ordinance Number 2020-23, an ordinance amended in Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Curville, Texas, which adopted zoning regulations, use districts, and a zoning map in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan, such chapter more commonly known as the city's zoning code. By changing the zoning and classification of a portion of the property generally located east of and adjacent to State Highway 16 South, south of River Hill Boulevard, and comprising approximately 172.56 acres, said property's zoning previously amended by Ordinance Number 2020-03, from a medium-density residential zoning district, R2, to a residential estate zoning district, RE, amending the comprehensive plan, Curville 2050, to make it consistent with such amendment, providing a cumulative clause, providing for severability, providing effective date, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. We do have one citizen speaker signed up for the public hearing.
All right, okay. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you. This is a zone case on 172 acres from R2, the medium-density residential, to RE, a residential estate zoning district. So, those are your larger lots, a minimum size of one acre within the RE zoning district. There's an aerial of the property there. This is adjacent to Medina Highway and River Hill. The adjacent property on the comprehensive plan is transitional residential and preservation residential. The request does include an amendment to the comprehensive plan to go to estate residential, consistent with the zoning for residential estates, so that the comprehensive plan does match this zoning request. With the previous zoning request, there was a comprehensive plan amendment to the preservation residential with the previous plan. Planning and Zoning Commission approved it unanimously. If you please answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
You have any questions for Mr. Paxton? Okay, all right. We have one speaker, I think.
Yes, sir, Greg Richards.
Good evening, council members. I'm here on behalf of the property owner, Vintage Heights, and Mr. Kamak is here, as well as the project engineer, if y'all have any questions for us.
All right, okay.
I have a couple of questions. One, minimum acreage will be one, and is there a maximum?
No, no maximum.
No max, okay. And has there been any discussion on the entrances into River Hill? There's, I believe, three.
I believe that will be subject to further platting requirements for whoever ultimately decides to subdivide it.
Okay.
So, this is going to be primarily RE, and there's going to be, there will be a remainder that is being asked to remain R2, is that correct?
Yes, there's originally 225 acres that went from adjacent to River Hill all the way to the area where the new thoroughfare is planned. And so, the request to Planning and Zoning, and the request before you, is to rezone 175 of those acres, the ones that are immediately adjacent to River Hill, as residential estates, and leave the remaining 50 acres that is further, I guess that's to the west, to leave those as R2.
Okay. Now, for the city manager, the development agreement with Vintage Heights is still on. We're not going to, we're not taking, we're not taking that agreement off while it's R2 until we do this zoning change.
That's correct. After second reading, assuming it's approved, then that's when we would terminate the old agreement.
And we don't have to do that as a council? Is that what I understand? That you have the authority to terminate that agreement? So, at that point, primarily, it's going to be like it was before, primarily?
It'll actually be more restricted. It was previously zoned as R1, which has a smaller lot size, and so, instead of asking to take this 175 acres back to R1, we have asked to take it back to residential estates, which is an even larger lot size.
Okay.
And this may be a question for Mr. Paxton, but what is the impact on the Curville-Shriner Park?
I don't know.
I mean, I would think it's less density.
Until we have a full development plan, we wouldn't have an exact answer. It is a lower density, so there would be fewer homes adjacent or fewer properties adjacent to that. But until we see a full development plan, we don't have...
But it assumes a spur around this property from Medina Highway to Bandera, right?
That's possible, we don't know.
That's actually in the thoroughfare plan, so that does assume that at some point, but not as part of this action, that's a separate plan. So, but how that will line up is yet to be decided as part of the platting process.
Well, so it may not be pertinent to this, but I tell you, I really don't want us to have a negative impact on the Curville-Shriner Park. We'll deal with that along the way.
Is there a timeline for platting and putting all this together?
No, ma'am, the property is currently for sale. So, it will be someone else who pursues further development of it.
So, once we do this, all of the incentives, everything that's in place, it no longer exists. So, once this development agreement is, becomes inactive after we, if we decide to change to RE, then the idea is that we can take that off and that there's no incentive for any kind of housing, any kind of project, any kind of price point, any kind of anything.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Greg.
Other question or speakers?
Bruce has his hand up.
We have no callers.
Okay.
Bruce Stricki, 615 Earl Garrett. I'm sorry, I heard something tonight I hadn't considered on this item. So, if we move forward... So if we move forward with this new zoning, then the development agreement will go away at a future date without coming back to the public and being discussed. Is that correct?
Well, my understanding is the development agreement is contingent on the zoning as part of the development agreement. Is that right?
Mike, you may want to jump in here, but that's correct. It doesn't have to come back to the council because the agreement, um, has already designated authority for me to terminate it.
I understand that, and, and I didn't realize that when I was looking through the documents. Thank you. So the one, so to think, one thing to think about then is this current zoning proposal allows for modular homes and, which is a permitted use and that's, that's all fine. It's part of the RE zone. But if the development agreement goes away and the openings are reopened to River Hill, I think that there may be an issue with some of the neighbors about what's going on here and they don't realize what's happening. And so I just wanted to mention that, that that may be part of the consideration this evening. If, if the, if the change to access to the three openings on River Hill come back and now we have a property zoned next door with one acre minimums that allow modular homes, that is a little different than I think that this was presented. Or that people have thought about.
What, what, what zoning districts is our modular homes allowed?
They're permitted in any residential district except for R three.
So it could be anywhere. Somebody could build a R one, in a R one right now and build a modular. So any, on an unimproved lot in River Hill, someone could come in and build a modular home. Unless there's restrictions in River Hill that prevent that from doing, but, but not, but not any other reason than subdivision restrictions.
The other fundamental issue here is that the development agreement includes significant incentives over time that we don't want to be, have in place anymore. And so.
I agree with that.
Um, and that's the leverage that we had to get the prior zoning and plan done the way that we did. Um, normally you would not have that unless it was a PD zoning. So it basically resets everything back to what it was with the exception of the piece that's further west of the fifty, fifty acres.
Right, so I mean, I, 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 I mean, to me, Bruce, what I would say is if, if this development had never changed to R two, if it had never had a development agreement attached to it, it would be, already be allowable. I mean, we're not, we're not changing anything about what it could have been before to make it, to make it more, in fact, as Greg said, by asking for RE, we're actually restricting the property more by making the lots have to, the homes have to be on bigger lots. So I, I guess I don't see it that way since it would have been allowed before there were any changes. And someone could, you know, arguably go in anywhere except for, you know, where it's permitted and do that, so.
I apologize. I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that and, and Mark's entirely right, and so my point is mute. And I apologize for bringing it up and take wasting your time. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Let me just say, uh, one thing. A lot of times when, when somebody uses the term modular homes, folks immediately think mobile homes, manufactured homes. Modular homes are quite different and can be done very nicely. Uh, but. But I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, there's.
The modular just means that they bring in pieces of the home. They're not building the entire thing on site.
Yeah, I know that, I know what I'm.
No, I know, I, I'm, I'm just, I know that you do.
The, um. Um, I'm sorry, there's a level of confusion about this because this is a difficult, um, process. But, uh, any other questions or comments from the council?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty dash twenty twenty dash twenty-three.
All right, got a motion?
I'll second.
Got a second, okay. All in favor, if you would raise the right hand. And all opposed, by the same sign. All right, now we move to another public hearing, ordinance number twenty twenty, twenty-four. If you'll read that in for us.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-four, an ordinance amending chapter sixty of the Code of Ordinances, city of Curville, Texas, which adopted zoning regulations, use districts, and a zoning map in accordance with the city's comprehensive plan. Such chapter more commonly known as the city zoning code. By changing the zoning and classification of the property being Lot three A R Block one over Street Park, a subdivision within the city of Curville, Texas, and more commonly known as fourteen twenty-one Junction Highway, State Highway twenty-seven, from being part of a planned development district established by ordinance number two zero zero four dash nineteen to a light commercial zoning district C two, providing a cumulative clause, providing for separability, providing an effective date, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject.
Okay. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this property is part of the strategic catalyst area number three in the Curville twenty fifty plan. It is currently zoned PD from two thousand and four along with the two adjacent properties, uh, to the southeast. The request is to go to C two, light commercial, uh, to allow for the plans for a future business. Uh, this will be a, um, combination between a restaurant and a brew pub for a local brewery. Planning and zoning commission approved it with unanimous vote and be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing?
I had a question about the parking. It shares the parking with, is it AT&amp;T? Or is it, um, who's the other?
It's.
Business, okay.
AT&amp;T and, uh, they have a shared entrance, uh, but they do have, ownership is different between the parking lot.
Okay, and it looks like you've stated that there is adequate parking for the brewery.
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Drew, I just want to say, I think this is kind of a reflection on redoing and the revamping of the zoning code is that we're now able to move it out of the PDD and take it into an actual zoning and I'm, congratulations. That's what we're, that was part of the whole project. I know of getting that is trying to get a note of the planned development districts and the exceptions and putting them more into that standard deal. So I'm, I'm very proud that we're able to do that.
Couldn't hear what you said.
I didn't either.
Yeah.
You want to re. Say that again.
I'm sorry, I'm just saying that it's, I think this is culmination of, uh, redoing the zoning code. We're be able to now remove these properties out of a PDD and put them into an actual zone. And that's, I think that's just a testament to the hard work that these guys have done over the last couple of years.
Yes, good point, yes.
The, uh, okay, any other, do we have any speakers or any other questions on this?
We have no callers.
No callers.
Okay, all right. Uh, this again is real interesting in the sense of what they want to do is, you know, take the old Fuddruckers and orient it more toward the river. And, uh, with the possibility of that park across the way at the end, at the bottom of the landing, make it pretty, pretty inviting, I would think. Yeah. Okay, all right, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-four on the first reading.
I'll second it.
All right. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand and it's unanimous. Okay, Ms. Mackland, number seven.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending the city's fiscal year twenty twenty and fiscal year twenty twenty-one budgets to account for the transfer of excess funds, the receipt of additional revenue, and make other amendments as provided herein. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up for this item.
Okay, all right. Ms. Doherty?
All right, good evening. I'm going to start with a presentation, let's see. Okay, so we're gonna do two things here tonight. First, I'm gonna, um, give you a financial update, um, to kind of bring you up to speed through the end of September, and then we're gonna talk about some proposed budget amendments. So as you'll recall, um, we are on a fiscal year basis, so our fiscal year ends September thirtieth. Um, after year end, we have to complete a year-end close process. We do additional entries for financial reporting purposes. So we're still in that process of closing. Um, so what I'm presenting tonight are preliminary numbers, um, but we definitely have enough information here to give you a good idea of where we'll end up for the year and, um, and to present some proposed budget amendments to you. So I'm gonna start with the general fund. Um, as you'll remember, the general fund is our largest fund. It's our main operating fund for things like, um, public safety, streets, parks, that kind of thing. Um, and we've, you know, we've had many discussions over the last, um, six months especially, um, about the general fund, um, because we had lots of concerns about what was gonna become of our general fund revenue sources during the pandemic. So what I can tell you is that, um, overall, during the pandemic, um, revenues have been down, but they've been better than anticipated. Um, and that combined, um, with the next thing, when we did first start looking at this in April, when we said, okay, we think our revenues are gonna be coming in lower, we need to have some kind of financial response to that, we implemented a series of budget cuts. Um, so we did successfully cut our expenditures through those budget cuts. And then we've also received, um, multiple grants related to CARES Act funding. And so those two things resulted in lower-than-budgeted expenditures for the year. So if you'll look at the yellow highlighted numbers on this page, you'll see a couple of different things. I'm gonna go into a little more detail, but that actual twenty twenty column there shows that we're ending the year with a net of three point seven million dollars, so revenues that are three point seven million dollars higher than expenditures for the year. Um, if you look one column over to the right, you'll see that this is a comparison to the budget. You'll see that, um, yes, our revenues were lower than budget, four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars lower than budget, but that's not as bad as we had projected. On the expenditure side, we'll get into a little more detail as well there, but, um, expenditures, four point two million dollars less than what we had budgeted. So I'm gonna talk about revenues first. Um, on the general fund, we, um, had an original budget of twenty-eight point eight million dollars in revenues. These are our largest revenue sources listed here. Um, COVID hit, we started hearing all kinds of, um, of projections about how the economy was, um, falling into a deep recession and we started making projections about what that might mean for the city of Curville. We projected that revenues could be as much as two point two five million dollars less than budget. So revenues at twenty-six point five million, that's that April projection column, that's the second one there. Then we ended the year with revenues actually coming in at twenty-eight point three million. So less than the original budget, but much better than the April projection. Um, and you'll see that difference from budget of that four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars worse than budget. But on the, um, very last column, you'll see the difference from the April projection, so one point eight million dollars better than the April projection. Um, we've discussed sales tax extensively, um, and you'll see there that, um, we're looking at ending the year. This is just amazing to me, with sales tax coming in better than our original budget. We thought that we really were gonna see a significant hit to sales tax because of the pandemic and it just didn't materialize. Um, and as we've been talking about month after month, we've just seen strong performance from our regional retail, um, providers here in town. We've seen online sales that are strong. We've seen local manufacturing strong. And so we actually are ending the year better than our original budget and significantly better than what our April projection was. Some of the other, um, categories are a little different. Property tax is the first one, real close to budget there and just, um, you know, one thing to mention there, the timing of the whole pandemic was, um, from a property tax standpoint, meant that we didn't have a lot of, um, impact from the pandemic because property taxes are generally due January thirty-first and that was before we really started seeing impacts. So property tax came in real close to budget, just a little bit better than budget. Um, EMS, we've been talking about this for multiple months as well. EMS, um, surprisingly, um, we've seen a significant departure from budget there. So over five hundred thousand dollars worse than what we had predicted, um, for our EMS budget. And, you know, that kind of is a little counterintuitive, um, given the pandemic. But we really have seen, um, non-emergency transports, um, take a significant hit in the March through August timeframe, down thirty-seven percent, um, for those, um, ambulance runs. And just overall, in general, we've talked about this as well. But, um, in that March to August timeframe especially, EMS, um, runs, EMS revenue, um, billable incidents, all of that, um, were just down for a myriad of reasons. Um, so, um, that actually ended up a little worse than the April projection. We also, um, have an ambulance supplement revenue that we get from the state and that, um, that did not, we'd never know exactly how much is gonna come in there and that ambulance supplement payment ended up being less than what we were expecting. Um, municipal court, we've also been talking about that one down significantly, so, um, significantly off of budget, fifty-three percent less than budget, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars worse than budget. Um, our court was closed, um, for a period of time and, um, with people staying home with the pandemic, that kind of thing, um, lots of reasons why, um, the municipal court revenue was less than budget. Recreation revenue, um, has rebounded significantly, so, um, that's a bright spot there. Even though Curville-Shriner Park was actually completely closed for a period of time, um, when it opened back up, things really turned around and our Parks and Recreation Department has done a great job of, of trying to safely bring back, um, outdoor activities and that kind of thing over the summer. Um, so worse than budget, but better than expected. And then that all other revenue category, um, was actually, um, better than what we were expecting. That all other revenue category does include a sixty-seven thousand dollar grant from the Health and Human Services Department. Um, that is CARES money, um, coming through there and that is CARES money that, um, can be allocated for lost revenue. So that's specifically being allocated for EMS lost revenue. And then we also had better-than-anticipated solid waste surcharge revenue, so, um, that helped us there. Moving on to the expenditures, um, you can see, uh, a list here of just across the board. Um, these budget cuts, um, came in and departments really, um, did everything they could to try to cut costs, um, as we were uncertain about where our revenues would come in. Um, so you'll see, um, some of those largest departments listed up there, police, fire, parks and rec, streets, and then all other. Um, adding those departments up, those departments saved two point eight, almost two point nine million dollars, um, from their original budget. And it was a combination of, um, maintenance deferrals, the largest of which being street maintenance deferrals, over a million dollars there. Um, we also had, as you know, a hiring chill, executive salary cuts, reduced travel and training. Um, parks obviously had a lot of canceled events, um, and, uh, and closures, that kind of thing that generated some savings. So anyway, two point, almost two point nine million dollars in savings compared to the original, um, budget coming in from individual departments. Then after that, um, we applied for CARES Act funding in the amount of one point three million dollars. Um, so this is money that you may remember is coming through, originally came from the federal government through the Texas Department of Emergency Management and they have an allocation formula of fifty, um, five dollars per, um, pop, person of population. And so that came out to this one point three million for us. Um, but we don't just get the money, we have to actually submit expenditures that are allowable expenditures in order to claim the money. And so we have submitted, um, uh, expenditures totaling the one point three million that are in the allowable categories. And specifically, we submitted, um, expenditures related to our patrol officer salaries. So, um, all police department-related patrol officer salaries. And that's something that the U.S. Treasury Department specifically designated as, um, patrol officers were, um, were frontline workers in the fight against COVID, and so those were allowable expenses. Um, I did receive, um, good news today, um, basically, um, so this is kind of going on across the state of Texas and most, uh, I don't know of any cities actually that have actually received their, um, requested funding from the Texas Department of Emergency Management. Talked to the auditors, talked to the county, other cities, no one has actually received money yet. But, um, the city of Curville got an email from the tech, a representative of Tedom today, um, letting us know that our request for reimbursement has been approved and that our payment. And that our payment should be processed soon. So still don't actually have the money, but but definitely some good news today to get an email saying they've reviewed all of our expenditures and they have approved them as allowable. So I'm hoping to have good news to report soon on actually receiving a payment, so. All right, so next, we're going to go through a couple of other funds and then get to the budget amendment of, you know, what do we do with this extra money? Okay, on the water fund side, water sales, a little bit lower than budget. We did have some reduced commercial consumption during the pandemic. We also had changed our water modeling, consumption modeling during 2020. And this was our first year of the new model, so I think we're going to tweak that a little bit. But anyway, a little bit under budget on water sales. Other revenue, better than budget. You know, as you know, we've seen a lot of growth this year, so sale of new meters, requested services, tap fees, that kind of thing helped us with increased other revenue. We asked the water fund to find ways to cut their budget as well, just like the rest of the city, even though their revenue source wasn't as impacted. And they came up with $542,000 in savings from budget on the expenditure side. So we ended up with a net here of 482,000. So revenues higher than expenditures by 482,000, the water fund. And I'm going to quickly go through some of these other funds as well. These are the ones that we talk about on a monthly basis. Development Services continued and ended the year with significantly better than expected revenues. As you know, development and construction continued during the pandemic, so major projects, HEB, KISD, the landing, Arcadia, Starbucks. We saw significant permit fees there. And so they also contributed to the budget cuts. But they had revenue that was better than budget, so they also ended up in a good net position at the end. Golf has a, we have a good story here. So they were obviously hit during the pandemic with their recreation revenue. And the course was closed for a period of time and then reopened with some, you know, kind of different modes of operation. So they did not meet their revenue budget, but they were able to completely offset that revenue reduction with expenditure reductions. And what I'm showing you here, this gets into a little bit of accounting terminology, but this is a cash basis. So it doesn't include depreciation and pension adjustments and some things like that. But on a cash basis, the golf fund broke even, so 30, almost $3,700, ending the year with revenues $3,700 higher than expenditures.
Yeah, that's great.
Good.
Mm-hmm, yep. And then the last one, the Hotel Occupancy Fund, another story here of of real change. So hotel occupancy tax obviously took a big hit for the year, down 17% compared to 2019. We had hotels that completely closed for periods of time. And we were able to really take some action to cut expenditures to match that revenue decrease. The CBB is the largest expenditure, funding the CBB is the largest expenditure from this fund. They cut their costs and we reduced our expenditure to them. We also had some special events that were canceled, so we didn't have some expenditures there. But anyway, we were able to end the year in the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund, actually in the black, by $19,000 because we were able to match that reduced revenue with reduced expenditures as well. And those are just the highlights I just hit. Okay, so now we get to the budget amendment part. So a couple of things. So we normally have a budget amendment at the end of the year, just to do some kind of cleanup, housekeeping kind of things. And we're going to get to some of those items in just a minute. But the first thing that we want to talk about is, okay, we ended the year with this surplus in several funds. And what can we do with that surplus? And so we're going to talk about the general fund first. So you may remember back a few slides, $3.7 million in revenues that are higher than expenditures. So this general fund category here, spent a lot of time talking about, you know, what kind of needs do we have? And obviously, we deferred expenditures and things like that. And where should this money go? So we, as you probably know, and you'll remember through the budget process, we have different funds to account for different things. So one of our funds is an asset replacement fund. And it's kind of like a savings fund for different capital or different large pieces of equipment and vehicles, that kind of thing. So I have a list here that you'll see that totals up to 1.4 million of items that we know that we need to be saving for or that we need to purchase in the asset replacement fund. So we're proposing at the end of the year, transferring some of this surplus to the asset replacement fund. You'll remember that council has already approved the purchase of a brush truck for the fire department. That hasn't come in yet, so when it does, we would pay for it out of this asset replacement fund. We also cut some some normal asset replacement purchases purchases from the 21 budget. You'll remember that in our 21 budget, we are, we still have really conservative assumptions about that sales tax may be down this year. And sales tax, you know, lower than the previous year. So we weren't able to fund everything that we normally would fund in the 21 budget. So this is putting back some of those things that we would have normally funded, but using our excess 2020 money to fund those items. So a Lucas device, that's like an automated CPR device on our ambulances. We're trying to add one of those a year. And Chief Maloney has a has a long-term plan to put those in every ambulance. So we had cut that from the 21 budget. We also have an ambulance power load system. So we have an ambulance budgeted in the 21 budget. But the ambulance does not have something that that the fire department feels is really critical to provide the best patient care and also provide the best tools for their employees. So this ambulance power load system is something the last ambulance we purchased has. And it's a it's an automatic loading system of the patient on the stretcher into the ambulance. We also have IT items here. We had cut, you may remember talking about this during the budget process, several of just our normal replacement plan items. We said, you know, we can go a little longer and we can try to, you know, wait a little bit. So these are some of the items that were cut from the 21 budget, but we'd like to add back if we can. This next one is a big number, 500,000 for streets equipment. Streets is currently evaluating what kind of equipment they need for sure. But but they, their paper is 10 years old and it's nearing the end of its useful life, so we know that's on the radar. And then we have $800,000 that is not designated for a certain item, but reserved for future purchases. And like Councilmember Clarkson mentioned earlier, all of these things would come back to you again. So even if you approved a budget amendment, if the city is going to purchase a $500,000 payment, that individual item has to come back to council again. Anything that's over a $50,000 purchase, even if it's part of the approved budget, still has to be approved again. So that sums up the asset replacement transfer. Another fund that we have is called Capital Projects. And so this is a separate fund for for large capital projects such as streets. That's the largest capital project activity that we have going on now. It can be other parks, buildings, that kind of thing. But you'll see here, we have a transfer to Capital Projects for streets in the amount of 1.25 million. And so that is recognizing that we cut a million dollars from the streets budget. And they set up a plan to defer some maintenance. But obviously, council has prioritized streets for quite some time now. And so we want to put that back and actually a little bit more. If we put it in this Capital Projects Fund, that money will be available, even though they weren't able to spend it all by the end of this year. We also have something here, Transfer to Capital Projects for something called a base map. This relates to our GIS system and getting some upgrades and updates there. And then here we have this reserved for future projects of 500,000. So you'll notice that that 500,000 and then the 800,000 in reserved for future asset replacement purchases, those two amounts total 1.3 million, which is the amount of this CARES Act funding. We don't have anything right now, you know, lined up to go, a purchase ready to go. And certainly, we would wait to make sure that that CARES Act funding actually was received and in the amount we expect and all of that before any further decisions were made there. Okay, so that's the asset replacement and the capital projects. And then we get down to a couple of items here that are actually, would be expenses in 2021. So it wouldn't be an end of the year transfer, they would actually be expenses in 2021. And the first one that you'll see here is a one-time payment to full-time employees. This, what we're proposing is a one-time discretionary payment to full-time employees that's equal to 2% of their salary. You'll remember that employees in the 21 budget did not receive any merit or COLA raises. And so this is, just to emphasize, a proposed one-time payment and not something that would be expected to continue or anything like that. But a one-time payment in recognition. Well, the city manager speak a little bit about that at the end. But anyway, one-time payment for employees. And the other one that's a 21 item relates specifically to public safety. So public safety personnel, they have a little bit different compensation plan than general government personnel. Theirs is called a step plan. And it's a a little bit more clear-cut path of they get a promotion on an anniversary date and stay in a step for a certain amount of time. And and we had proposed all step raises be completely eliminated for 21. So there are no step raises in the 21 budget. Normally, those step raises occur on the employee's anniversary date. We're proposing that this be, step plans be reinstated, but be reinstated with a six-month pushback. So if you were due to go to your next step on January 1st, that wouldn't happen on January 1st, but it could happen on July 1st. And so you'd get a portion of that step increase during the 21 budget year if you're eligible for a step increase. You'll see those amounts here, $48,000. And these amounts include the, you know, the taxes and the retirement benefits that are added on as well. And then the one-time payment to full-time employees, 317,000. On the water fund side, we have a transfer to Capital Projects of 100,000. You may remember during our budget discussions, the VAC Con truck that that our Public Works Department really would like to purchase as soon as possible. And with this 100,000 added to our existing asset replacement fund balance, they would be able to purchase that truck in 21. And then the same one-time payment to full-time employees. So those are the budget amendments related to the to the excess funds at the end of the year. And then the rest of these just are more housekeeping items. Number two is to account for grants received and spent. So we have a separate fund called the Grant Fund, and all grants go through that fund first. We do not budget for any grants until they are received. So we don't say like, oh, yeah, we're sure HEB is going to give us a million dollars. You know, we don't budget for it until we actually know. So you can see here, one, almost 1.5 million dollars in grant funding has been received. And these are grant funds that have also been spent. So there'll be a budget amendment that increases revenue and increases expense for that amount. Number three relates to the Airport Tea Hangar Project. That's a project that has been delayed. We had originally budgeted 150,000, $150,000 for it in 2020. We actually only spent $5,000 so far. Part of this money is in the is in the general fund and part of it's in the Capital Projects Fund. So we have 27,000 left in the general fund. We're proposing moving that over, combining it with what's left in the project fund and holding that money there still designated for airport tea hangers. Number four, as you know, we contributed $400,000 from our HOT funds for Arcadia renovations that occurred this year. We had a little bit of money, $3,000 left over after we made that contribution. This relates to some interest income. We had two different HOT funds, HOT, Hotel Occupancy Tax. So we had a Hotel Occupancy Tax Reserve Fund where this Arcadia money was. And then we just have our regular HOT fund where all the just usual CBB, that kind of stuff goes through. So we're left with this $3,300 in the reserve fund. We're proposing transferring it back to the regular fund and closing the reserve fund out. Number five relates to something that happened about a year ago. But we had a generator that was budgeted in 2019, approved by council. And it was ordered in 2019, it didn't arrive until October of 2019. So that put the expenditure into 2020. So we need to re-budget for that. It's being purchased out of the asset replacement fund. The the money just stayed in the asset replacement fund, nothing was done with it. It just, you know, fell to fund balance, was kept in cash there. But it wasn't spent in 2019, it was spent in 2020 instead.
Amy, one quick question on that.
Yes, sir.
I'm just curious, because we do budget amendments periodically through the year. And why wasn't that one not picked up in the spring budget amendment?
We actually didn't do a spring budget amendment this year. We do, yeah, because of COVID. But yeah, you're right, normally we do two budget amendments and that's the kind of thing that would be picked up in the first one.
Just curious, okay.
Let's see. Then this is kind of just a cleanup one as well on the EIC side. So EIC only budgets for project agreements that they've actually signed and approved. Makes sense, they wouldn't want to budget for something that isn't done yet. So there, and you know, these agreements come to council for approval as well. So we had two approvals during the year that weren't part of the original budget. These amounts here just represent the amount that was actually spent in 2020. You'll notice like the Doyle School is 113,000, but that's a $500,000 agreement. So that's just the 2020 portion of it. Almost done. Number seven, the Library Endowment Fund. So lots of people love the library. And we, there is an Endowment Trust Fund that was set up many years ago that had been managed by Wells Fargo. And in 2020, the trustee was changed from Wells Fargo to the city. And as part of that trustee transfer, there was a little bit of professional services expenses incurred. So this is budgeting for those. And then the last one, which this is always something we have cleanup amendments for as well, relates to our insurance reserve fund. So we have a separate fund for insurance claims. And we never know, you know, what kind of claims we're going to have, that kind of thing. So we ended up receiving additional claims reimbursement and also having additional claims expenditures in the current year. And so there's a budget amendment for those amounts as well. So that was a lot to go through, I appreciate everyone's attention, and if you have any questions.
Let me comment first, Amy, that, you know, we did, as she mentioned, we have a smaller budget this year than we did last year because of all the significant cuts. These are things that are, we really shouldn't be deferring, whether it's streets, taking care of our employees, buying equipment that's needed so that we can provide the best service that we can to our residents. But doing it in a responsible way. So you'll note that a lot of this stuff is being put, set, is being set aside more for one-time related expenses so that you're not building an operating budget on revenue that's just not going to be there next year in terms of the CARES funding or what have you. So it's really restoring many of the cuts that were made from both 20 and 21. And I want to comment briefly on the city employees. You know, several of our employees took, actually took pay cuts this past year. And, you know, just to make the numbers work. They also worked with a smaller workforce because some of their coworkers were either out being quarantined or they were out ill. And then they remained on the front lines to protect and serve our community at a time that they were putting their and serve our community at a time that they were putting their own, you know, lives at risk, basically. And so this proposal of a one-time lump sum would not go to the base salary and roll forward on us yet next year as a cumulative cost increase. I think that's the responsible way to do that, because we don't know that that money is going to actually be there. The exception is for police and fire to reinstate that STEP plan. We want to remain competitive with police and fire on recruitment, and we don't want to slip. So I think we're in a pretty good spot, but we don't want to slip. And that's why I want to reinstate that as soon as possible. So I would just respectfully request the council's support for that. And then I guess, Amy, we'll take any questions from you now.
Okay. Any questions, counsel?
I just want to commend you. I think you've done a marvelous job of rearranging everything. So, thank you.
Well, it certainly was a group effort, and we appreciate the council's support on this as well.
I just want to say, you reacted so quickly. We wouldn't have had some of that money when we had it, had you not literally stopped the day we were all beginning to shut down and worry. You went ahead and just took the step. So thank you, because that, that quick action helped us immensely with our finances. So.
All right. Do we have any speakers?
I had a comment, mayor.
Sure.
I had a comment.
You got a question?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I just, Amy, I just want to let you and all the staff know what I, what I see when I see these numbers. And it, it just screams responsibility, conservatism, and also listening. You know, council prioritizes streets. We prioritize the human resources and capital, all of you who do your jobs. And it was really painful to go through this, but you took us through this. And now it feels like Christmas. It feels like, you know, we tightened the belt, we changed our budget, we reduced our expenses, and now we get to be rewarded by putting those presents back under the tree that, that, that we never wanted to take away in the first place. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. And certainly, we wanted to be very conservative in our approach. And, you know, no one knew what this was going to turn out like. So I'd much rather be reporting this news to you than the other way around.
Right.
Okay. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. Peggy McKay.
Peggy McKay, 103 Westchester. And mayor, I'd spoken with Amy just a few minutes before the meeting started, and I'm guessing that all the answers are going to come from her. Should I address her or address you?
You have to address the council.
Yeah.
And then Amy will answer, I assume. I tried to, to compare the cuts that were made with the figures. And I know it's in there somewhere. I just can't make heads or tails of parts of it. But there were some questions. One thing that Amy just said was, did I understand that we received 5 million from, I'll say, the COVID fund?
No.
Okay. What have we received to date?
If you'll finish your comments, then we, the council may ask questions of the staff to respond.
What have we received to date?
You have my answer.
I'm sorry?
I responded to your question, Peggy. Can you, can you finish your questions that you might have?
Well, there, there are several. That was just one.
Okay.
You want me to give them all to you at one time?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. Another one is the one-time fund to the employees. I'm assuming that because they took pay cuts, that this replaces the pay cut. And so this will not change the base salary, since it is discretionary. So next year, it'll be whatever their base salary is. And if there's any increases, it would not include this discretionary fund. And another one is, let's see, I got the base salary. The golf fund. The golf fund ended up with, in the black. However, I'm not sure if the total budget for 2020 was before or after the cut, due to COVID. And also, it had a, a balance in the black because the $80,000 transferred in from the beginning of the year. So my question is, will each year's budget for the golf fund include a transfer in at the beginning of the year? And will that come from excess funds?
All right. Thank you. Ms. Dozier?
Well, mayor, I can respond to those.
Okay.
So on the first question about CARES funding, it's the 1.3 plus some smaller grants that we've received, but probably in the neighborhood of 1.4, 1.5. Amy can correct me on that if I'm wrong. You also asked about payment, pay cuts for this year, and was the discretionary pay replacing those? No, those pay cuts will not ever be restored. This would be across the board, 2% lump sum. And, and you're right, they would not reoccur next year. It'd be a whole different budget process and, and what we could afford and so forth. So they would not become part of the base for next year and roll forward on us. And then on the golf fund, it was, I think with the numbers that were presented were before the cuts, and then how we compared to at year-end with all the cuts in the actual numbers, as well as the revenue. And the $80,000 subsidy from general fund to golf, right now, we have budgeted that for, I guess, maybe three years in a row, maybe, maybe more. But it depends on how well the golf fund does. Golf typically, in most cities you'll find around the country, is subsidized. For example, last time I looked at Fredericksburg Golf Course, it was subsidized a half a million dollars from the general fund. So we would hope to eventually make it more self-supporting. And we've done some restructuring over there to help, help make that happen. But it, it remains to be seen if that's going to be on an ongoing basis that we would provide that subsidy. So Amy, do any clarification?
Just a couple of brief clarifications. So 1.4 million is, is the number for CARES-related funding. As far as what we've actually received, we've actually received 67,000 from this Health and Human Services grant. So we've actually gotten the money for that. And we've received 266,000 towards our 1.3 million from the Texas Department of Emergency Management. So we still are waiting on a little over a million more. And that's what I was referring to with the email today, where we've gotten at least some confirmation that it should be approved, but we have not actually received the funds.
All right. Do we have any other speakers?
No, sir.
Okay. Counsel, any further questions? Ms. Dozier?
No, sure.
All right. We have a motion in regard to this item.
I'll move that. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2020-25, amending the city's fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021 budgets to account for the transfer of excess funds. The receipt of additional revenue to make the amendments as provided herein.
I'll second.
Okay. We got a motion, second. All in favor, if you'd let me, let me know by the raised hand, and it passes unanimously. All right. If you read 8A for us.
Master project agreement with Corin Maine for the purchase and installation of data collector software and training and metering supplies for the city's advanced metering infrastructure AMI project.
Okay, Ms. Dozier?
I actually just want to introduce you to our Assistant Finance Director, Julie Barons. She will be presenting this item.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm very happy to be talking to you about this. Finally, this has been about a year of research and development. And I know this isn't the first time you've heard about this. We discussed it quite a bit during our budget workshop. But we're bringing it to you tonight because we're ready to make our first purchase and get this project kicked off. So we're super excited about that. It is a budgeted item in the 2021 budget. And because it's over $50,000, we're going to need your approval to proceed. On page 198 of the proposed budget book, if you were to want more financial detail, there is quite a bit of detail there as well. So before I kind of jump into the AMI, I want to just give you a real high-level overview of what our current system looks like and why we feel like it's really important to transition to this new system. So right now, we have three billing cycles, geographically divided throughout the city each month. And we only have the capability of reading those meters by physically going to those locations and getting it done. So there's a lot of issues that come up from doing that. So we can only detect high flow once a month unless the customer indicates to us that they potentially have a leak. So by having to go out there and read that meter once a month, you could have a 20, 25-day-plus water leak that you don't know about. So just to give you an example, a two, two gallon per minute water leak, which is really small and you may never notice, could potentially be 60,000 gallons in water loss. And that's just one leak. And we have quite a few of those that we deal with each month. So the main takeaway from here that I want you to understand is just the physical eyes that we have to put on, on the meters. So also understand that the infrastructure that we have in the ground right now was put in in 2009, and it's aging. So we're starting to run out of warranty as things break. We're having to pay for replacement. And the items that we're proposing that we put in the ground are the exact items that we're putting in the ground now as part of our annual, you know, maintenance that we have to do on a daily, weekly basis. So moving on to our proposed AMI system. So the main point here is that when we convert to AMI technology, our reads are going to come from the meter to a data collector to the office. So real-time data, data is available to us. We'll be able to set up alerts so that we get notifications if there's high flow going on for someone, make contact with that customer fairly quickly, depending on how soon we set up our alert system, and stop that water loss as quick as we can. And then also, you know, reduce some, some staff time, reduce some truck rolls by having to go out there and check those things physically. We can take care of it all from the office. And on the customer service side, if you as a customer call us and you want to know specifics about your consumption history, or you just want us to check because your bill is high, we can look at that for you from the office. So some huge impacts on the customer service side. It does support Curb 2050. So with our growth plan, the biggest thing here for us from a staffing side is we're going to be able to maintain a larger system with the same staffing level. Because those reads are coming directly to us, we will still have some drive reads because it would be impossible for us to think that every meter would be able to be read like this. But it's going to be greatly reduced staff time to do reading. So we all know we're growing, and so I think that's going to be a big bonus for us in the future. And we'll move on to our proposed vendor here. So Corin Maine is a sole-source vendor for Neptune products. And Neptune is the infrastructure that we have in the ground right now. So we did look at multiple companies when we started researching this project. And what we found is that our current infrastructure will work with this new data collector technology. So we would have to make some minor replacements, obviously. We'd have to change out our current antennas, some of our registers that are outdated, we would have to replace as well, and some meter box lids, just to make these things retrofit to what we're already using. The data collector is really kind of the big difference that we would add here, because as we're upgrading, we're doing maintenance, we're replacing aging infrastructure, we're already putting the infrastructure in the ground that will talk to this data collector. So just by adding the data collector and the updated software, we're going to be able to make the connection between the two. So also, keep in mind that using a multi-phase approach, which is what we're projecting or what we're proposing that we do, we're going to be able to do that by staying with Neptune. Because we can replace things as they go out over time, we're not having to make a complete register replacement, which would mean going in and replacing about 11,000 registers to the tune of somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 million at one time, to be able to make this change over. So this is going to allow us to do that without incurring any debt. So we'll talk about our three-phase approach. And again, you've seen these numbers in the budget already. So what we're proposing by doing this is really focusing in on our smallest cycle first. It's a very dense cycle, centrally located, the smallest number of customers. So we feel like this would give us the best opportunity to implement this, test it out, work out all the bugs, get the software converted before we go to our larger cycles. So we feel like this is going to be the best approach for us, adding one data collector for this cycle around. It would be the software, the training, the conversion, all happening within this cycle. So the first purchase that we're asking of 158,400 is primarily for infrastructure that's going to be going into the ground. There will be some other things that we'll have to purchase after the fact, also in phase one. And you can see the step up in phase two, where we're picking up cycle one and a little bit of cycle three, which is our largest cycle. And so we will need two data collectors here. And the idea was to get the software purchased in phase one, where we could get away with one data collector. Then when we have to buy two data collectors, we don't have that added expense. So being able to balance out the total expenditure over these three years. So you can see kind of how we stepped this up here. But overall, this is the way technology's going with metering. We are at the end of our useful life with these registers, which is about 10 years. We're already starting to see them go out daily. So instead of sending them back and getting them replaced with our warranty, now we're having to buy them. So we're going to have to make this change anyway. The big question here is, is the data collectors that we'll be installing. So we really plan on seeing a reduction in water loss, because we'll be able to get to those leaks quicker. We plan on being able to help our customers a lot quicker and a lot more efficiently. And, and really, technology is, is where it's going in general. In utilities, we're seeing it more and more. And I think the water system is just coming around to that side as well. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Counsel?
When, when people are notified with this, is it through an email, a text, or will it be a phone call?
You're talking about if they're notified for water loss?
For water loss, yes.
Well, we have implemented recently with our new billing specialist, we are actually making personalized phone calls to customers when we see high usage. And that's as of now. And so we're making a lot of phone calls because we're only doing those monthly. But we really want to get that information out to the customer. I think in previous years, they were sending out letters to customers, which might take three to five days. So then you're a week longer before you actually realize there's a leak. But in this new system, we can use an email. We, in our system, in my customer service world, I would prefer that they just make a phone call and try to reach out to that customer. Because if we need to get something from that meter, we need to get information to the customer. We get it to them as quick as we can, so we get it repaired as quick as we can.
K-Pub has gone to smart meters, and it's gone well.
Yes, sir. I did meet with them and asked them about, you know, their transition and how that went. And their conversion was very smooth. And they're getting really good feedback from their customers on that.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Motion, second. Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
All right.
I'll second that.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. Unanimous? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Skater, 8B.
Resolution number 27-2020, a resolution setting the date, time, and place for a public hearing for the city's annexation of an approximate 33.81 acres of land currently owned by the city and located adjacent to Loop 534 Veterans Highway and north of the intersection between Loop 534 and the newly constructed extension of Olympic Drive, author, authorizing the submission and acceptance, acceptance of a petition for annexation, directing the publication of notice for a public hearing, directing the city manager to prepare a written agreement for the provision of services for the property and containing other provisions relating to the subject. And there are no citizen speakers.
All right. Mr. Paxton?
As Ms. MacLaney said, this is a resolution for the petition annexation of city property at Loop 534 and Olympic Drive, approximately 33 acres near Tyvee High School and the new Hal Peterson Middle School. If approved, the case will be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on December 3rd, with a public hearing and a zoning recommendation January 12th at city council for a public hearing and the ordinance first reading, and carrying over to January 26th, the second reading.
All right. Okay. Question, observations. Okay. This is really an extension of what we've already done. So all in favor, if you'd let me know by the raised hand.
I'll make the motion, mayor. I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we approve resolution number 27-2020.
I'll second the motion.
That's a good idea to have the motion and the second first. Okay. All right. All in favor of this motion, raise the hand. Okay. All right. All right. Um, 8C, Ms. McLeannan?
Mutual release and settlement agreement regarding the aerial pipe bridge Loop 534 project.
Do we have any speakers?
No speakers are signed up.
All right, okay.
We need to defer this to executive session, Mayor.
All right. So we will defer that to executive session under number 11.
You need a motion?
No.
I'm going to go down there.
Okay, then we'll move to 9A.
Briefing and possible action as to the city's ongoing preparedness of response to COVID-19 coronavirus.
All right.
Good evening. Brief presentation, um, over the COVID-19 response. And it should be, there we go. So up to date as of today, so total, uh, for Kirk County was 1,036. We're currently sitting at 100 active. That includes both, uh, all the tests here in Curville that, that we have. 17 deaths, 919 recovered, with 12 hospitalized at Peterson. Interesting, uh, one that came out that I saw today was 11,954 total tests, uh, for Kirk County, including the ones with Texas Military Forces, Curative, uh, and our nursing homes here, and Peterson. Local update, we have meetings this week. The community leadership meeting is on Thursday, the 12th. On November 3rd, the results from the free public COVID testing. There were 447 total tested with 42 positives. For Kirk County, there were 359 Kirk County residents and 30 of those positive. That's about an 8% positivity. The next free public COVID testing will be at the Hill Country Youth Event Center on Wednesday, November 25th, from 8 to 4. That is a walk-in. No physician referral or appointment is necessary. Other reminders that COVID-19 continues to remain a public health threat. So continue to remain vigilant. Uh, do not become complacent over the holidays. Continue to review the CDC guidelines for best practices for that. And some of those are, continue to recommend the social distancing, masks, reduce the spread, and our primary protective measure as we enter the cold and flu season. Stay home if you're sick, and I highly encourage the, uh, flu vaccine as we move forward. Questions?
All right. Questions, Counsel?
Well, I was curious about the Waterside, um, home that's on Water Street. Has that been contained as far as the cases there?
So we are, continue to work with that. We had a task force meeting today with the Department of State Health Services, and they will be back in this Friday, uh, working with the facility, as will Health and Human Services, HHSC, as the regulatory agency. So we'll continue to work on that.
Keep our fingers crossed.
I've got one question for you. Have you gotten used to people calling you chief?
No, sir. So.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. Items for future agendas? Okay. Uh, executive session under 551071. Uh, 551072?
Just 071.
Do what?
Just the one.
Just 071.
Just the one, all right, okay. Oh, 071, all right. Okay, the, um, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session over 551.071.
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. We're going to executive session. Come back and report if there's any action. Uh, the council is back in session. And I am going to ask Ms. McLeannan if you'll read, uh, 8C-11A.
Mutual release and settlement agreement regarding the aerial pipe bridge Loop 534 project. 551.071 consultation with attorney.
Okay. Could you hear that?
No.
No. Let's try it again. Okay. Would you, would you read it again?
Mutual release and settlement agreement regarding the aerial pipe bridge Loop 534 project. 551.071 consultation with attorney.
Okay. All right, um, I would like to ask, uh, E.A. Hoppey, Deputy City Manager, if you would, to present this to us.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to announce that we did not take any action in executive session?
Yeah, in the executive session, we did not take any action.
Martin, if you could bring up the PowerPoint presentation on 8C, please?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, briefly, uh, would like to go back through the historical timeline, uh, on this project and on the damages, uh, and subsequent, uh, elements, uh, to correct the damages, uh, related to the aerial pipe bridge. Uh, as you may recall, this design was completed, uh, by Freezer Nichols Incorporated, an engineering firm, uh, in fall of 2016, uh, really as part of a larger, uh, project, the city of Curville Reuse Distribution System, uh, which had, um, a multiple, uh, pipelines that were going to different areas, uh, throughout town. Uh, the construction, again, was part of that larger project, but, uh, approximately $700,000 worth of it was allocated towards, uh, that aerial pipe bridge crossing the Guadalupe River, uh, just, uh, south and east of, uh, Loop 534, Tech Stop Bridge. Uh, construction on that was completed in about mid-2018. Uh, unfortunately, the project did suffer, uh, major flood damage in the October 2018 storm event. Um, and the, uh, ultimately, the bridge and that pipe infrastructure was removed by the city in early 2019. Um, the city immediately, uh, undertook forensic, uh, engineering and construction material testing efforts, uh, to better understand, uh, the failure of that aerial pipe bridge in the early 2019 timeframe. Uh, and then in a parallel path to that, recognizing that we still needed a successful crossing across the Guadalupe River, uh, engaged with, uh, Kimley Horn, uh, for the, that re-engineering effort, uh, in, again, in that 2019 timeframe in parallel with the forensic engineering, construction material testing. Also, in a parallel path, the city applied for Texas Water Development Board Disaster Recovery Grant Funding, uh, in conjunction with the aid of Freezer Nichols and helping us navigate, uh, that somewhat very bureaucratic process, uh, of state funding. Um, there were two phases, uh, that, uh, the grant was initially applied for. One was a $1 million and then a subsequent half a million dollars. Uh, and we were successful, uh, much through the efforts of Freezer Nichols, in being able to secure a total of $1.5 million, um, from the Texas Water Development Board, uh, for that effort. And that assisted really on three different key components. One was, uh, reimbursing the city for, uh, the, uh, recovery, uh, basically of those debris and being able to pull those elements, uh, out of the river. Uh, and then the, the re-engineering effort, which we had launched off on with Kimley Horn. Uh, and then ultimately, the construction cost, which we got, as you recall, successful bids on in October. Uh, and so we did receive those just in October of 2020, uh, in the ability to place that infrastructure, uh, up onto the Tech Stop Loop 534 bridge, which will be, uh, further out of the floodplain and will be a, a much more safe location. So that's the general timeframe. The settlement agreement before you tonight, uh, there's a couple of key points. Uh, again, uh, Freezer Nichols did provide, uh, basically pro bono service, uh, for the engineering and contract administration for that contract in pulling out that damaged infrastructure. There was no cost to the city for that. Uh, they're approximately $80,000 in value. Uh, this, the Freezer Nichols provided $45,000 in pro bono staff time in assisting the city on that, uh, successfully achieving that $1.5 million Texas Water Development Board grant submittal. Um, and so, uh, again, that Texas Water Development Board has full reimbursement for the infrastructure removal, the re-engineering effort, and the reconstruction, uh, of that upgraded project. Um, and then Freezer Nichols has also, within the settlement, uh, settlement agreement, agreed to reimburse the city for $85,000 of the forensic material testing and the legal fees, uh, that were incurred. So essentially, the outcome is that the city has been made whole, uh, entirely on the project. And rather than getting the $700,000 project that was down, you know, in the floodplain area, the city has been able, through the, the Texas Water Development Board, been able to upgrade this infrastructure and project at no additional cost, uh, in a more safe location that's more resistant to future storm damage. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, do you have questions?
I just want to comment. I, you guys have done a, a great job as you've, uh, worked through all of this, and thank you for your work. And, uh, and I think we owe a, a thank you to Freezer Nichols also for what they've done for us.
I just want to add that, that, you know, I, because I know this has been a point of conversation among many people for quite some time. And I think it's important that our citizens know that we took it very seriously. We've worked at it for a long, long time, along with staff, trying to get this project. Our goal all along was to make sure that the citizens were made whole, uh, that we incurred no, uh, out-of-pocket expense in this project. Uh, and I would give Freezer Nichols also some credit for stepping up to the table and working with us and wanting to maintain that relationship. So it's a, it's, it's a good deal, and it's been worked at very, very hard. And I commend the staff, uh, Mr. Hayes and all of our staff, uh, and, uh, able to reach this agreement. Uh, because it was, um, as these things do, they take a lot of time. There's a lot of detail and a lot of i's that have to be dotted and t's that have to be crossed. But I think it's a very good deal.
Yeah, and regarding a lot of time, uh, this, this happened, this started two years before we were, uh, in terms of the installation and so forth, two years before this council was here. So I'm, I'm glad to finally wrap it up. All right. Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. All in, uh, get a motion second on this.
I'd be glad to make a motion that we approve this, authorize the city manager to approve the mutual release and settlement agreement.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion, second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand? All right, good. Okay. This, uh, session of the city council is over at 8:17.